This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Hearing for May 14th, 2019. To begin this evening, I offer an apology for our late start. We did have reason to call an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss a matter of potential litigation, so that's the reason for that and the reason why we were coming actually technically back into session a little bit late. So to begin this evening, I will explain, tonight's meeting is slightly different at the beginning because it also, in addition to our business meeting, it's our legally required budget hearing to be held in the district. All school districts are required to have that legally held prior to the budget vote. So what we're going to do this evening for matters of public participation, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McGowan. He is going to do a quick review of the budget as things currently stand. We will go through that and that will be the hearing process of presentation. We will offer opportunity for public comment on the budget itself. So any members of the public that are here with us in attendance who have any questions or comments with regard to the budget will be invited to do so. At the conclusion of that portion, we will open it up to the general public participation session. And we do have a gentleman that we are welcoming this evening who asked to come this evening and discuss the veterans' tax exemption legislation. So we will invite him at that point and also general public participation before we move into the regular meeting agenda. So that you're all aware of, that's tonight's planned process. So, um, do we need to?
Nope.
Okay. So I will turn it over to Dr. McGowan to begin review and the actual formalized public hearing on our proposed 2019-2020 budget.
All right. Thank you very much. So this is, I know you'd be very upset to hear the final presentation of this to you, but it's a very brief overview. We've had today, we have the eighth budget open house. We have one more scheduled next Monday morning, I'm sorry, 10:00 AM in this room. And as has been publicized by many places, I will go anywhere, meet anyone, please let me know. And I'd be happy to come talk to you, whether it's Starbucks, Charperoil, or your kitchen. I do like brownies and cupcakes. And I'd be happy to go through any of this information, answer any questions for you. But tonight's hearing specifically is to walk through some of the basic information that has to be reported out and certainly open it up as it is a hearing to any questions that anybody may have. It's not the full budget presentation that we have given many, many times, but of course, the statutory information that we are required to provide. It's a summary of appropriation by function, object, location, some of the budget detail by function, and summary of staffing. The property tax report card, school report card, fiscal accountability, summary assessors' report, and administrative compensation information can all be found at bcst.org, page 15387 at that address. And of course, this presentation, in addition to all of our other budget presentations, are posted at bcst.org as well. So if you want to use that as a link to that information, you can see all of this information in great detail. There is nothing that the community does not have access to. It's fully transparent and available to you as well. As we've mentioned several times, the budget is a value statement. And we believe what we're presenting to the community expresses what we value and hopefully reflects what the community values as well in terms of what we're funding in the budget and where we are devoting our resources. So this budget proposal meets and exceeds our state mandates to support every child, provides funding and support of blueprints plans, particularly those related to diversity, equity, inclusion, as well as safety and security, and certainly respects our taxpayers and honors our commitments relative to the debt service, which we'll talk about in a second, and planning for the full day kindergarten program as well, both commitments that we made to the community in 2017. On the left-hand side are the items that we express and remind people that we value in terms of what we are supporting in the budget each and every year, some of the things that are beyond the mandates. So instructional leadership, professional development, which improves and enhances the experience for our students, our co-curricular athletic and arts opportunities for students as well, the additional interventions and supports that really are the great equalizer between all groups of students and help all of our students achieve at a high level, something we're very proud of. Summer school offerings that help our students support their needs, help them maintain their focus on graduation, on time graduation. We know when kids fall behind, they are far less likely to graduate. We have an exceptionally high graduation rate for all students because of programs like summer school, small class sizes, additional course offerings as well makes a big difference in the experience for our students. The team teaching structure at the middle school that allows teams of teachers to focus on their students, have collegial conversations on a daily basis about their students on their team and address their needs. And transportation services that serve our entire community in many different ways, including our non-public students on days that we do not have school, which is for students in non-public situations and parents paying school taxes that are not availing themselves of their public education, their appropriate public education here. That is a service we provide that is important to those families. So on particular days off that we have here where those schools are in session, we still provide that. Other than the altruistic idea that they benefit from an educated citizenry around them and a high-quality public education that is raising property values for everyone in the community, this is a service that directly impacts many families in our community. We want to make sure they understand that in our budget, this is something that we continue to support. It is important to all of us that we're supporting all kids in our community. And on the right-hand side are the items also that are supported in this year's budget process that we had to cut back in order to also be able to propose, which is dedicated additional staff time for our diversity, equity consultancy, which has really been very beneficial in the community, expanding the family navigator service, which is providing additional mental health support for our families, additional full-time staff members to support our English as a new language learners, enhanced school safety staffing models, which includes additional security guards throughout the district to keep children and staff safe, continued planning for full-day kindergarten to start in 2021, and budgeting towards that now so that when we get to that point, we are not proposing a significant tax increase to continue to staff that model. We are building towards that over time. And fully funding the tax impact of the capital project, which now will then be put into our budget, that car payment that we don't currently have, and then that will be part of it going forward. This is a one-time lift to put that payment in, to begin to achieve the state aid that is a result, and to make sure that that capital project, which is due, approved in 2017, that debt service has to happen and we start paying that now because the bigger payments start to come in future years, this levels off the impact to the tax levy over time. How does our budget break down? Where does the spending line up? The salary area is up 3.1%. That doesn't mean each salary is up 3.1% at all. It means that overall spending in that category, from people in, people out, the number of people that we are funding, the spending is up that much. Benefits is actually down 0.8% because of the healthcare consortium we participate in and rates going down in that area. Our BOSI's cost is up slightly and our supplies and services up $1.2 million. So in other words, the types of things that we need to pay for to keep the lights on, the electric running, et cetera, those supplies and services. Our debt service is going up $1.2 million. That's what I mentioned to you. That's that lift, that car payment that we need to put into place over time, up 1.6% in this year's budget. Broken down a little bit differently, you can see that increase in the blue. That's that capital increase going up from 9% to 10%. That's the lift. The administrative component is just 10% of our budget, our administrative costs. Our overall spending though on program, that's what impacts our kids, is 80% of the budget. So 80% of the budget goes towards program. This is the three-part budget as defined by the state of New York, the capital component, the administrative component, the program component, and 80% of our spending goes right back to kids in classrooms. What do we do to reduce our spending in certain areas? Remember, when we first presented the budget to you back in January, it seems like years ago, I know, I know it just flies right by with all these presentations and the quick wit, et cetera, but we had to do a lot of work to get down from a tax increase that at the time was over 7%, the preliminary budget, and whittled our way down then to under 5%. The reduction strategies included adjusting for our mandated services. That was a $500,000 increase. That adjustment was to the negative. That's tuition costs that went up and program costs for students, which we would never begrudge a single child, but that's a cost driver people need to be aware of, a $572,000 increase. But then we were able to reduce in other places, so our risk provisions. In other words, the places in the budget where we say, we need to make sure we have enough in that line in case we go over what we are planning on, we're able to reduce those provisions. Our change in revenue assumptions, so the additional state aid from where we started in January, excuse me, the governor's proposal was only $74,000 in aid. Quick comment, we're supposed to receive $1.4 million more in state aid and the proposal was only, the governor's was only $74,000. So that I don't drink out of somebody else's water? Do I find it a bit unfair to say this? We're adjusting our capital allocation out of the general fund as well, making class size adjustments and our cost of course offering adjustments on the elective offerings as well and at the K5 level. The breakage from retirements, we had more people retired we were able to count on as well, and new positions for enrollment, and adjust the number of students that we're planning on for op-ed services, which was a reduction also in the budget. Excuse me. So on the left-hand side is the proposed increase in staffing positions. So the full-time equivalency for new positions for enrollment at sixth grade, staffing mandates for English as a new language as well, the proposal I mentioned to you related to diversity and equity, the family navigator service to provide additional mental health support, safety, security, wellness staffing as well, the security staff I mentioned to you, and the full-day kindergarten staffing amounting to $113,000 to avoid the spike in taxes later on. And then grant adjustments as well as federal funding is drying up in the federal education budget, we need to make sure that our positions are not budgeted in that grant, but rather in the general fund so there's not a funding cliff for those in future years. On the right-hand side, the staffing reductions we mentioned to you for enrollment, the elective funding as well. Those are at the 712 level and of course, first and second grade, also we're making some of those adjustments. And then additional electives of another $150,000 we had to reduce at the high school. I mentioned to you the debt service funding. This is really important to point out. The blue bar is the debt service or the car payment. That's the lift. That's what we need to put into the budget. By starting that payment now, we will begin to generate our building aid, of course, and prepare for the larger payment, which is mandated to be due next year. So if we start the payment now, we get ahead on that and we're able to level out the impact on the tax levy over time. Should we not start that this year? And that's about half of the tax increase. We will double our problem going into next year when we are required to start paying that, required to start paying that. So it's very important that we begin that process now to begin accelerating the advantage of the capital aid as well as to get ahead so we can level out that impact on the levy over time. What are our revenue sources? We're very aware that 67% of our revenue comes from property taxes, just 10% in foundation aid. It should be significantly more. Again, we are $8 million behind. The state should be paying $16 million to Brighton this year. They're only paying $8 million. That's 50% of our aid due. Our neighbors in Pittsburgh are getting 63% and Penfield are getting 70%. We are the lowest by far in the area and in this region of the state and among the lowest in the entire state of the 700 districts in the bottom 20 or so in terms of how we are funded. That $16 million represents real kids and real need and the state has not been able to fund that formula, instead dividing up the money in more of a political structure than the actual practical structure, the agreed-upon structure based on that algorithm. And that has a significant impact on Brighton. Our change then in the total preliminary budget amount is 4.5%. We are seeing an increase in revenues overall of 2.4% on restricted fundraising aid of 7%. And the amount of fund balance used for tax levy is 0%. So the non-property tax revenues, the percent change, I'm sorry, the dollar amount change is $931,171. The total real property tax levy to be raised for school purposes is $54,837,30. And the current year tax levy is $52,275,299. So the percent increase, and I apologize because I have to read the numbers to you in the budget hearing, is an increase of 4.89%. What is the impact then on tax rates overall? In the town of Brighton, the current rate is $24.70. Next year it would be $25.76. A rate change of just over 1%, I'm sorry, a rate change of just over a dollar, which the percentage and the rate change is 4.27%. So to give you a sense of what does that mean, on a home value at $75,000, that's $79. $100,000, it's $106. $150,000, it's $158. $200,000, it's a $211 increase in your taxes next year. $250, it's $264. $300,000 is $317. And $350,000, it's a $369 difference going into next year. And to figure out, knowing your assessed value, just simply per thousand multiplied by the rate being proposed, which is $25.76 in Brighton and $25.76 also in the town of Pittsburgh for our properties located there. Consequences of exceeding the cap though include also the loss of the rebate check. And I want to be very clear, this is not the loss of star. This is not the loss of star. It is not the loss of star. Just to be crystal clear, it is the loss one time of the rebate check. This is the property tax relief rebate check that was provided in November. The governor signed check that people will receive after the fact. It is a one-time loss. It is restored in future years. We do not plan on going over the cap in future years. In fact, our taxes are about 16% higher because of the state's inability to fund us the way we are supposed to be funded. We would love to not be going out with any increase in taxes if we were to achieve the funding that we are hoping to achieve. So over time, the plan is to not be over the cap. We've gone over the cap one other time. In fact, the first two years of the cap, we were under and then able to be cap compliant since that point in time. And we're now coming back to the community with the honest conversation that we had when the 2017 capital project was passed, simply saying, this was part of the plan and we would like to be over the cap this year and this is why, in fact, not we would like to, but we need to be to support program and the implementation of that debt service. So what exactly does that look like? The tax cap is 2.3%. That's the number right there, the orange bar. That would only allow us to roll over our program from this year into next year with some modifications and changes to accommodate the top of the pyramid, the .29%, which are the positions, the security positions, the mental health positions, diversity, equity position as well. Very small part of the increase, but that big chunk is that middle piece, the debt service related to the 2017 capital project plan, again, approved by taxpayers at that point and included in this tax increase as well. Without starting that process at this point, we'll fall far behind on that, compounding our problem in future years and certainly resulting in the same conversation next year, in fact, perhaps even more dramatically. As I mentioned, the trends in the tax cap, the first two years we were under the cap, the third year, 14, 15, we were over the cap. And since then, we've been able to be cap compliant, asking to go over again this year in order to support that and maintain that excellence in programming and to be able to implement the debt service that was promised based on the 2017 approval. What would happen though if we didn't pass at a 60% margin, the over the cap number required by voters? The cap is not an illegal function. It's not a function that the state says you can't go over the cap. The state simply says, here's what's happened, here's what happens if you are over that number. And one is the relief check that we mentioned to you. And the second is that not, you cannot pass a budget unless then you get 60% instead of the traditional 50% plus one. You now need a super majority in order to approve that. And if that doesn't happen, we would have to reduce $1.3 million to get under the cap. And we'd be coming back to you saying, what programs would you like to look at? How would you like to treat the debt? What would you like to do around the full-day kindergarten planning question? And how would you like to manage that? What would you like to present to voters again? And we would review with you all the non-mandated programs, which for years we've talked about with you, which is arts, extracurricular activities, clubs and activities at the high school, electives, extended studies, foreign language at sixth grade, instrumental music at fourth grade, the summer school program, the non-mandated pieces I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, and the wheel on the left-hand side of the page, which are the equalizer programs for all kids to support them, both in terms of the extra support they need to be successful and the different opportunities that we provide kids in terms of acceleration AP coursework as well. The pieces that make the Brighton experience different, the non-mandated functions, including the transportation that we provide beyond the mandates as well for non-public students. We'd have to look at all of those items and come back to you and essentially make recommendations to reduce $1.3 million. Just to give you a sense, for $1.3 million equals about 21 teaching positions or a combination of a variety of other positions. Certainly, we'd be looking at administrative teaching and other support staff positions as a combination of all those items and presenting that to you in a revised budget to discuss with the community at that point. Our capital reserve fund is another proposal. This is one of the normal proposals we would make in the budget process. This is to withdraw $3 million. It's also on the ballot, another proposition. And that $3 million is to support the program as well and plan on withdrawal in order to continue support for the improvement project, again, approved in 2017. This is part of the savings that are put aside to defer some of the overages and the additional costs in that project as well. This cannot be used for anything else. It can only be used for this purpose, but we need voter approval to do that. We can't use that to close any gap. We can't use that to change the tax cap number, nothing like that. It was approved by voters for this, but now we have to ask for permission to withdraw that. Likewise, our technology reserve, the advantage actually in the general fund is many of our technology purchases come right out of this particular reserve, the technology reserve. So they don't have to come out of the general fund. So technology spending is largely paid for out of this savings account, put aside by taxpayers over time, and can only be drawn from with permission from taxpayers as well. So that's a withdrawal of $500,000 that we are asking for. The property tax report card as well that we are required to report is the schedule of reserves. Again, this is all posted, so without reading every word on the page, there are some that I'd like to walk through to simply tell you the reserve type, the balance, and the estimated balance. The capital reserve is the first, the balance on March 31st, $9.62,083. The estimated balance would be $8,283. Capital reserve, the technology, is $1.5 million, $1,590,297. And the balance on June 30th, $1,090,297. Capital, the bus purchase reserve will remain at $200,000. Again, these were all amounts originally established by a voter referendum into withdrawal and need permission. The unemployment reserve stands currently at $452,862 and it will remain there as of June 30th. The insurance reserve is $100,000 on March 31st. The estimated balance will be $200,000 on June 30th after we use end-of-year funds to add to that particular reserve. And that's, by the way, for technology currently in the district, that insurance reserve. So particularly when we look at student use of the technology and our programs where students are bringing those machines home, we're looking to be able to self-insure that through this particular reserve. The tax surcharge claim reserve is $355,707 and it will remain that on June 30th. The employee benefits accrued liability is $863,021. It will remain that on June 30th. And the retirement contribution or ERS reserve, $4,823,540 and will remain that also on June 30th. And that will have $800,000 appropriate offset the tax levy required to pay or mandate ERS contributions. That's put aside in that fashion to be able to level off that contribution as well. Again, the tax levy increase and what is it made up of? The debt service is related to the facilities improvement plan approved in 2017, a big part of that piece. If we get that in the budget now, it levels off the impact on the levy over time. If we put that off until next year, the damage will be significant. We will be cutting program likely this year and next year to do that and we will just be compounding our challenge. 2.3% is our support for ongoing program, academic programs, and just .29% are the additional staffing requirements around diversity, equity, mental health support for students and safety as well. And we would have to look at significant programming and all of the financial planning models that we have in place in order to reduce by $1.3 million if not approved by 60% of voters. Again, we think that this certainly reflects what we value as a community. That is certainly for community members to decide then as well when they vote next Tuesday, 7 to 9 at Brighton High School. The total spending proposal is up 4.5%. 2.9% of that is operations. So in other words, if you're just to look at what it would be to roll the budget over from one year to the next, the spending is less than 3% of an increase. 1.6% in addition though is that capital increase. And that's in spend, not the tax piece, but in spending. So our spending going up, 2.9% or under 3% to just continue the excellent programs that we have. The additional 1.6% of spending is the capital component. We believe it certainly reflects our continued investment in the priorities, safety, security, wellness, rigorous coursework for all students, creativity and innovation, instructional technology, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and responds to mandated increases in spending and continued investment in our program, really while still responsibly trimming where we could in ways that would not significantly impact the student experience and it honors that 2017 commitment that we made and that taxpayers made when voting for the facility improvement program. Again, ultimately reflects what we value. And again, budget vote Tuesday, 7 to 9, Brighton High School and at Lewis Spaghetti Dinner. Please join us. We have tickets. Any questions?
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate the update. And now we offer the opportunity for any members of the public that are here with us this evening to ask any question on the budget if you have to make, if you'd like to make a comment or a statement with regard to the budget. This is the public hearing for that and it's your opportunity. I ask that you raise your hand. I'll ask you to step to the podium and give us your name and your address if you would. So is there anyone who wishes to speak on the budget itself tonight, right now? Okay, seeing that we have no one for that portion of public participation, I would like to open the opportunity for public participation from the general public. And I do want to invite a gentleman who has contacted us and would like to speak tonight to us on the veterans' tax exemption. So I welcome you, sir, to the podium at this point, if you would. And we do have, you had sent us ahead of time a couple of slides that you would like to present. We do ask you for your name and address if you would when you arrive.
Do you want to put your name through?
I think he's got it here.
Yeah, sure. Come. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Good evening. My name is Dante Pinakia. I live at 333 Pelham Road, Rochester, New York, and Brighton, New York. And I've been there for 23 years as a resident. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran and I came here tonight to talk to you about veterans' exemptions on schools because I think the timing is right. Timing's right for a number of reasons, not just because we're two weeks away from Memorial Day, but also because the first suburban town in Monroe County, Gates Chaillie, just approved, their school board approved, the veterans' exemption. Now, the Rochester city, city of Rochester, has been providing veterans' exemption since 2015. They have held it up to $180,000, which is the medium amount of housing that they have. Gates Chaillie, as I said, was the first suburban school board to approve the partial veterans' exemption. They didn't give the full exemption and I think Brighton could be the first to do that. There are 807 veterans in Brighton, various types, wartime veterans, combat disabled, Cold War veterans, et cetera, and they would receive various types of exemptions. The coal vets, which is really World War I, World War II, receive very different types of exemptions. It's too difficult to explain exactly what they received. What I'm recommending is that we provide the same kind of exemption for veterans that they receive on their assessments for their property on the school tax. Now, what would this entail in terms of the amount of money that it would cost each parcel to do that, to bestow that honor? Well, if you look at the math here, there's 807 veterans, there's 31.6 million in property. At the rate of 2.471, I know it's going to 2.476 as of the last presentation, that would be $781,923 in taxes, which spread across the 11.3 parcels, 11,300 parcels, would be on average $69.24 per parcel in order to achieve this. Now, if that's if you provided the entire exemption, if you were to do what Rochester did and said, the median housing price is $200,000, that would go down, but that's an average. The majority of the residents would probably pay less than 69 and the commercial and larger homes would pay more. The veterans' tax exemption, that's $69,000, really the annual price of freedom that Brighton residents enjoy and the honor that they bestow on those 807 veterans. Memorial Day is the 31st. I'm going to suggest that it'd be a great day to announce that Brighton School Department is considering that exemption. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, Mr. Pinakia. We appreciate your service, obviously, and we appreciate you coming tonight as a prime resident. And I also want to say on behalf of the board, we appreciate you reaching out to Mr. Alamo a while back in conversation and asking to present and putting together the information that you have. So thank you very much for that. What I would say to folks, just for those who may be watching us or here in attendance tonight that might not be fully aware, I would anticipate the board discussing this a little bit further and bringing that forward for some really more in-depth conversation as we move ahead. The state of New York, the governor and the legislature approved this legislation actually back in 2014. And at that point in time, we had, the board as it consisted at that time, as it existed in the group at the time- in the group at the time, we did have some brief conversation about it, but we didn't have, we didn't hold a public hearing, we didn't discuss it further in depth at that particular time. One of the areas, and this has nothing to do with our support for all who have served our country and choose to live in Brighton, but we still, some of us on this board, remain a bit annoyed at the governor and the state of New York that if they wanted to enact legislation to truly honor veterans in regard to their school taxes, that they would provide the ability financially to make the district whole. Unfortunately, in this case, to grant the exemption, and you do describe, there's a varying level of exemption allowed, and there are various categories allowed, and it's a little bit convoluted, the legislation incomplete, but others, taxpayers would end up picking up a slightly higher burden, depending on how you look at it. Well, you know, well worth the conversation, community-wide, at some point in time, but that element of it has never sat well, I would say, with most school board members around New York State, that if they really wanted to do that in a way that we felt at the time was meaningful, the state could have fully funded it. As a matter of fact, I think there's been a number of attempts since the legislation to ask the state to provide the full funding, once a district were to allow that, whether it be a full or a partial, you know? So, we appreciate it. It's something we will have further conversation about as a group and with Mr. Alimo. When the legislation was created, Lou did provide us updated data on the veterans in Brighton and the different costs and different possibilities. You have provided us additional, so we will bring it forward to the board for further conversation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Is there anyone else this evening during public participation who wishes to ask a question, make a statement? All right, then, hearing that we have none further, this evening is our report night in a number of ways. So, before we get to that, I would ask, please, a motion to approve the agenda as you see, folks?
Move.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First up, before we get to the report section, a motion, please, to approve the minutes from our May 7, 2019 education meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Larry. Does anyone have any corrections to those minutes? additions, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, Dr. Debbie Baker to introduce our library media program evaluation.
I sure will.
And all the guests participating this evening.
Exactly, and I actually just want to preface by saying, I know the board realizes that each year we engage in several program evaluations. Tonight, we're presenting both the library media as well as the world languages program eval. At our last board meeting, we had the physical education program eval. And in general, program evaluation is a real point of pride for the district. It really is an opportunity for not only our teaching staff, but also members of the Board of Education, parents, to come together and really work to look at a given program, to see what's working, and then to make recommendations for areas of improvement. Before I turn it over to Katie Lambert and the rest of the library team, I just really want to give a shout out, acknowledgement of appreciation for all of the people who participate in Program Eval. If you've never participated in Program Eval, it's a, you know, it's a real commitment. We start in the summer, there's usually a full-day kickoff meeting. These individuals have been meeting once a month, sometimes for upwards of a half a day at a time, to really think deeply and look deeply at these individual programs. So, I really appreciate the commitment that they are making to really making sure that we are always doing the best we possibly can for our students. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katie Lambert. She's going to introduce the rest of the team and present our library program eval.
Hi, I'm Katie Lambert. I'm the librarian at 12 Corners Middle School, and I'm going to have everybody come up and introduce themselves as well.
Hi, I'm Adama Litzkevichus. I'm the librarian at Council Rock Primary School.
And I'm Justin McVay. I'm the librarian at French Road Elementary.
And I'm Howard Enes. I'm the librarian at Brighton High School.
We're also joined. Come on forward.
And I'm Ilka Dotik. I'm a parent.
So, we're going to share with you the program evaluation today. I just want to mention, too, that the program evaluation is a structure, it is pretty structured, a structure that we go through every, you know, five, six years in our case, but there's lots of good things happening in every single one of our libraries, and we haven't been here that long. At the K-2 and the 3-5 level, they've been there for two years. Howard's been here for five. I've been here for seven. So, these are still relatively young programs. If ever you want to know more, come on in or volunteer, right? We'll have a sign up at the end of, at the end of tonight.
Good to have a pitch. You have a captive audience.
Did I hear yes? You'd like to? No. So, today, we're going to start, and we're going to show you a number of slides. We'll discuss a little bit about our program evaluation. You can see on this slide here, this is one of our enel students. She is deep in research, so we're going to get started with the program evaluation. Our committee members came from all four buildings at a range of levels, so teaching assistants on up through teachers and also administrators. We also had community members and board members join us as well. When we're talking about the objectives of the library program evaluation, this is where we get into the specific design of the, of the program. Our libraries are really created and staffed with resources so that we can give students opportunities to learn, create, and grow. That's our mission, those librarians. So, the goal of our program evaluation is to identify data that might be used to look at a few things. Number one, how well students are achieving the goals of the program, and number two, the extent to which the district supports the work to achieve, to achieve that student achievement. So, we look at things like curriculum development, we look at instructional practices, we look at assessment and the different ways that we do and don't do that. We looked at the learning environments in all of our buildings, we looked at resources in our buildings, and then we also looked at our staff leadership, how we lead in our, in our various buildings. Move the next slide here.
These are the guiding documents that we utilized. National and state standards and other professional guidance recommend that librarians model, promote, and foster inquiry learning to prepare students for college, career, and life. New York State Library standards provide a framework of inquiry and learning skills at each grade level called the Information Fluency Continuum, or the IFC. The state standards provide a scaffolded guide to fostering reading and information literacy practices for inquiry-based learning, how students find and retrieve information, think about it, evaluate it for relevance and accuracy, use it purposefully and ethically, create products showing learning, and conduct reflective thinking about themselves and the process. And priority two of the Brighton Blueprint, rigorous coursework, also recommends the incorporation of inquiry learning into Brighton's instructional practice. These were the library program goals, to develop students who are critical thinkers, ethical researchers, and motivated lifelong readers and learners. In addition to our alignment with the Brighton Blueprint, our library program goals are aligned with best practices and common beliefs of the profession, and we often use technology in reaching our program goals. On the next few slides, we would like to share Brighton's current structure for delivering information literacy instruction. Brighton's current design for service delivery occurs differently depending on the grade level. So, this is for the K-4 program. At the lower levels where students are learning to read, library class is a scheduled special. Class time is allocated between finding reading materials, learning and practicing information literacy skills, and exploration of literature. The high number of classes and a fixed schedule impacts the ability of the librarian and the classroom teacher to work together on common goals in a highly collaborative interdisciplinary way.
And I'm in a unique position where I see some of that K through 4 scheduling as well, well as the fifth grade scheduling. This Brighton's current design for service delivery of information fluency skills in grades 5 through 12 moves away from the fixed schedule and to a flexible schedule. The collaborative efforts of classroom teachers and the librarian are the foundation for student learning in a cross-curricular setting. Librarians and classroom teachers seek opportunities to integrate information literacy skills using a just-in-time model. The collaborative planning efforts of both librarians and classroom teachers provide opportunities for addressing both the information literacy and content area standards. Because the level of collaboration is driven by teacher choice and is optional, is not systemic, and leads to inconsistency in levels of service and student experiences. That being said, students at this level have greater independent access to the library and use of the space, the staff and resources, for their own learning purposes. And at the high school, this results in over 1,000 student visitors per day at times. The data sets that we looked at while looking into the program evaluation were surveys that were designed for students, faculty, and administration. Analysis of the library collection itself, so that was able to give us information on the age of the collection, the value, and then it breaks it down into different categories as well within the library, so we can look at our nonfiction versus our fiction, the number of titles compared to the number of students, and so on. Another set of data that we looked at was the library staff service and time, so we kept track of the types and number of questions that library staff were asked throughout the day. The limitations of data sets, sometimes there are limitations to available data or limitations on the amount of data available within the timetable of the review, such as finding standardized data sets and student learning. And on the, the surveys, we found that due to wording, there's also a possibility of confusion just to the intent of the meaning of a question. And then, from building to building, there was a difference in response rates, so that could make generalizations inaccurate.
So, some areas of strength. So, the library's collection of resources is both to foster students' professional or personal growth, rather, and then also the school's curriculum, whatever that curriculum might be. So, some curricular areas of strength for us are that we saw a significant increase across the board in the use of digital resources and specifically databases, and that was for all schools. And that actually means a lot to us. It means we have access to devices so that kids can use digital resources and that people are using them. The teachers are using them and possibly the students are using them individually. So, we think that's wonderful, that not only are digital resources available, but available in such breadth that students can use them when they need to. Another strength related to creativity and inspiration, a majority of our survey respondents believe that the library's resources sometimes or always inspire them to create or innovate, and that's what we want. We want creative and innovative students. So, 75% of students said that sometimes or always they were inspired. That source of inspiration for creativity and innovation dovetails very nicely with the blueprint, we think, priority area three. Another area worth noting is that sense of service that librarians bring to their learning communities. We do our best to make ourselves available for students. Sometimes that's within a classroom setting, sometimes it's by just sitting out in our libraries and supporting students as they walk in or teachers as they walk in. The fact that we're not always available and that we're only sometimes available, it really talks to the fact that we're trying to wear many hats at all, at all times, and sometimes we just, it's just impossible to be available for everyone, but we certainly do try.
Another area of strength is independent reading. As you can see, students use the library resources, space, and staff to help them read, learn, and grow. A majority of our students, 83% sometimes, or always see themselves reflected in, in library resources. You know, guiding premise of librarianship is, you know, reader for every book, a book for every reader, and we seek to provide a broad range of texts and reading choices for our students. District priority area number four focuses on building equity within our school community, and the librarians recently attended a training in support of this initiative, and we've considered various methods to foster diversity and equity in the evaluation of our collections, the purchasing, and the promotion and marketing of our resources. We feel that we have some very good resources that might, that some students might not be aware of. 71% reported that sometimes seeing, reported sometimes seeing themselves in the library resources, the largest category in the survey question, and 12% always seeing themselves. So, taken together, that's 83% sometimes or always seeing themselves reflected in the library resources. As far as the learning environment, 70% of all students feel comfortable and welcome in the library. Teachers generally feel comfortable using the library space, resources, and staff. As noted, you know, one area focuses the program management of the library's physical space and to support learning, and our staff and students expressed they were largely, largely feel comfortable and welcome in the library. And as Justin mentioned earlier, the bright, the high school library sees over 1,000 students every day, so we must be doing something right, I guess. As far as areas of opportunity, areas for growth and change, we looked at curriculum, and an area of opportunity within curriculum relates to the method that we use in Brighton to deliver inquiry-based learning experiences. Currently, many of our inquiry-based learning experiences are either delivered separately from the classroom, classroom instruction, or delivered in a non-systematic way, and that just the consistency is not there. The content area might be there, but the information literacy standards may not be being met or vice versa. So, we recommend an examination and review of the current method of instructional delivery to determine whether it really represents best practices in the delivery of inquiry-based experiences and whether other alternative methods might be feasible. The benefits of collaboration and the difficulty of providing collaboratively designed opportunities for students in the current construct were noted in library committee notes going back to 1994, which was way before Ian was born, and remain in place today, 25 years later, Ian. So, this is an old problem, and it's based on an older model of how school libraries, you know, should function. As 21st century librarians, we seek to reflect best practices in industry and are looking forward to putting our minds together to look for solutions to these logistical challenges. We surveyed teachers and administrations about collaboration and our library standards, and there seems to be a lack of awareness of the benefits of collaborative planning and a reported lack of awareness about the New York State Information Fluency Continuum, which is our standards, our library standards, in the staff and administration surveys. So, we recommend the development of staff, professional development on this topic because we just need to do a better job of, of selling it, frankly. As far as independent reading, students unfortunately report a decrease in independent reading as they age, as they, as the grades ascend. This is not a problem that's unique to Brighton, but it should be addressed. We recommend the consideration of a variety of school-wide methods to support reading initiatives for all student populations, and we look forward to discussion on this topic. As mentioned earlier, the library program has taken steps to increase diversity in our collection evaluation, our purchasing, the way we market and display books and materials, and as well as curricular recommendations.
So, another area of opportunity is around the learning environment. So, the libraries at all levels are very busy. We did see that K-5 teachers struggled to see the library as an inviting place that encouraged critical thinking, and upon reflection, we thought that this may have to do with either the library layouts or with the fact that there's such a high level of activity in the libraries. Some students were concerned with the hours during which the library was open, and because of this, the librarians are looking at their usage patterns and staffing in order to optimize their hours of operation. And also, as was mentioned before, the number of scheduled classes at the elementary level is really high, and so if a student or a staff member comes into the library while the librarian is already with a class, then they're going to be helped by a library assistant. And although that's great, they do lack the formalized training of a professional librarian. Another area of opportunity is social responsibility. Social responsibility includes the ethical use of information, citation, copyright compliance, and digital citizenship. And unfortunately, this was an area in which there was a lack of readily available data, and so we were not able to come to any definitive conclusions. So, we recommend this as an issue to be explored further in the future. So, moving to explicit recommendations, as a result of the examination of our areas of strength and opportunity, the committee developed the following recommendations related to learning environment and independent reading. So, the first was to explore methods to increase independent reading behaviors among students at all grade levels, something that Howard was just talking about. The second is to examine resources to ensure diverse student representation. The second is to examine resources to ensure diverse student representation. And the third was to explore methods to further foster a welcoming atmosphere for all students in the library.
Our next slide deals with recommendations for two other areas, curriculum and organizational support. And here we have the following four recommendations. Number one, increasing staff development about how the library plays a part in student learning. We inherently, you know, we're process-based, it's inquiry-driven, it underlies every content area, it's part of the next-gen standards, we just feel like it should be more pervasive than it is. We would like to also explore 21st century models for how to best conduct inquiry-based collaborative instruction. And thirdly, we'd like to look toward opportunities for student innovation and creation with appropriate resources and staffing in, in place. We are having small makerspace opportunities, like Howard has his, what would you call it?
Recording studio.
A recording studio at the high school. So, we do have, you know, his is a much larger example of what an innovation or a creation station might be, but some of us have smaller stations where students can, can conduct makerspace types of activities. But if we were to have those, such as is planned at Council Rock, those require resources, they require tools, they require time, they require space, and they require appropriate staff to supervise student activity in those places. So, lastly, there may be some additional staffing that we may consider for, to support those goals. Is it necessary? Is it not? Can we do with it? Can we, you know, is it required? So, that's a whirlwind tour of the program evaluation, and at this point, we'll entertain any questions or comments that you may have.
Questions, come back. Let's open it up to, we were, we're very appreciative that Christina and Marv were able to sit and work in on this group also, so I open it up to you folks for to comment on questions.
I just want to say, I knew very little about media services in the library, and I learned a great deal from these folks right here and the other people on the committee. It was a real pleasure, and you guys are to be commended, I'll tell ya.
Thank you.
Well, there you go. Christine, anything you'd like to add to this?
I think, you know, libraries are more than libraries now, and they're such innovative spaces in all different ways for research, for creative thinking, for creative making of things. So, I think that was really, I think it's great that our libraries are moving in that direction, and I always look forward to things that my kids bring home, even books, independent reading books especially.
Even books, there we go, right? That crazy thing, books in libraries.
Those are the favorite things.
You know, it is one of those interesting things, too, because I think we always, and thank you, all you folks tonight for representing, but everyone took time to serve on the committee as we always talk about with curriculum review work, it's, it's difficult. We really look forward to it being done deeply and broadly so that something comes from it that feeds how we do everything next, right? So, thank you for everybody who took the time to do that. And, you know, I think it's long been a strong suit in Brighton, our libraries and our media centers as a center and a hub for student activity, it looks different in each building. But I have to tell you, when we come in and read or we come in and visit for some reason, it is one of the most inviting spots in every one of our buildings. Each of you do a fantastic job with that, welcoming your students and welcoming parents, certainly faculty, but, but board members, too. And I think that's such a key factor to what it is that you do and the encouragement that you offer students, whether it be a real book or all of the other things that you, that we need you to do now in the ever-evolving world that you're in. So, so thank you very much for.
I just say as a dad, thank you for one, not charging overdue fees, that works well for my family. But actually, the experience that my kids have had in each of your libraries has been pretty special and really appreciate that. It is such a different place than the library that most of us experienced as young people. It is absolutely a hub of information, teaching, and learning in every building, so thanks for that work.
Thank you.
One final comment I want to add, because I think in the interest of the work that we are so involved with as a district right now around diversity, equity, and inclusion, when we read this year through the two, the Council Rock building and the Front Row building, it is one of those places that you immediately notice how hard we are working at representing all in the offerings that we have and the way that we go about it. So, I want to thank you for the efforts that you have all made in those rooms, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Now, next up, again, one of our own, I'm gonna welcome Andrea Costanza, board member who sat on the World Language Program Evaluation Group. And you're gonna introduce her.
I am gonna introduce.
Lead the way, I believe, to your group.
Yeah. I'm gonna try and get this. So, I asked to introduce, I was a French major in college, so I feel a kinship to this group. It's, the program's near and dear to me, mostly because of my kids' experience, starting in the sixth grade, going through 12th grade, was among some of their favorite experiences in middle school and high school. In fact, in their first year of college language requirement, they were both asked if they would be French minors because they, they came with very strong language speaking and writing skills, and I attribute that to the, the teachers that they had throughout their course of study. So, I'm very proud to be able to introduce you to four members of the World Language, which sometimes we know them as Foreign Language or LOT, they'll explain about the whole World Language part coming up. This work was done this past year with, with a lot of elbow grease. It was reflective, thoughtful, engaging, and I really couldn't have been prouder to work with them. So, je vous présente Lauren Mieszewski, a rabid newcomer, les profs de français au collège, Linda Palmer, une prof de espagnol au collège, et Christine Treasure, chef de qui.
Very impressive.
Our leader.
Enough said.
Yeah. Hard to follow that.
We're gonna start the board.
All right. Hello. So, this is the list of those involved with our five-year program evaluation. During the NiSEFELT Regional Conference in March, there was a panel discussion about retaining and recruiting World Language teachers. One teacher stated, "The world needs people who love what they do." Well, the teachers in this department love what they do and share their passion with students. We see this from the near 100% participation of the 612 World Language Department. So, I'm Lauren Mieszewski, I teach French at TCMS, I'll be talking about the points of pride at both schools. When you walk down the World Language middle school hallway, you may see students practicing play lines, creating projects, and doing group activities. The wing is full of student-made posters, art, and projects. World Language teachers greet their students at the door to get them talking right away. Travel is super important at TCMS. We are very proud to continue our three trips to Quebec, New York City, and Stowe, Vermont in eighth grade. TCMS World Language teachers weave culture into their lesson plans regularly. Holidays, food, current events, dance, and music are shared. Here you see the German Schilfest dancers, the German Gingerbread House contest, a Spanish Day of the Dead classroom display, a flamenco dance presentation in our gymnasium, and a French crepe party. Technology. Here you see eighth-grade students using their tablet to play Kahoot, an internet learning game. You see a Spanish VII class Skype to Spain. You see students working in the library with a media specialist to create an interdisciplinary project using Sway. The Spanish VII, the German VII, and soon, French VII classes will be doing this, working with Katie. TCMS Foreign Language Department has an iPad cart with 20 iPads and three laptops. We are using online textbooks, School G, OneNote, Flipgrid, iMovie, YouTube, and of course, authentic websites for comprehensible input. Both buildings are so, so proud of the language interns and its longstanding program at Brighton. They work with all 612 students and teachers and are shared between both buildings. If a student takes language from sixth through 12th grade, they will get to know seven native speakers before they leave high school. Well, that's cool, and I want to thank Simona for coming, our German, she just left. All right. Next, our points of pride at Brighton High School. We have two well-established exchanges. One is Bremen, Germany, and the second is Rennes, France. And I have a fun story to share. Emma Stein, a current 12th grader, traveled to Bremen on the same exchange as her father, Robin Stein, many years ago when he was a high school student. And scholarship. Brighton High School World Language students thrive academically. High School World Language students receive numerous awards in June. Each language gives an award, and there is even an award for students who excel in multiple languages. French Club and German Club are active, and some German students take the AATG exam. Nineteen German students have received scholarship trips from this test. This year, over 20,000 students participated in the AATG program. Forty-five students won this exam scholarship trip throughout the U.S., and one Brighton kid had, was one of the 45 winners. Her name was Helen Frank. And lastly for me is innovation. Here we see a 21st century classroom at Brighton High School. We see student projects. This one is about solutions for global climate problems. There is a picture of a student debate, and we see Spanish students writing children's
So, as Andrea had said, we are very reflective in our process and our practice, and we, we couldn't help but put some of those points of pride first, really thinking about ways in which in both at TCMS and the high school were connected to the Brighton blueprint through technology integration and rigorous coursework. As Debbie stated earlier, program evaluation process is an opportunity for us to understand areas of strength of a given program and also identify areas of need. And we welcome this opportunity with huge participation. One of the challenges that we know, if you've sat on program evaluation, and, and I've done that for several different areas, is that sometimes within that five-year period, there are challenges with actually accomplishing all recommendations that you, you put out in a program evaluation. So, in our process, one of the first things that we actually did was go back and look at the 2013-14 recommendations and really analyze those recommendations as far as which goals we met and why or why not, and which goals still might be important if we were not able to achieve those recommendations or goals from the previous review. So, we spent some time doing that, and in the midst of that work, the New York State started to have quite a bit of action and change going on in the area of World Language. In November, the state hosted a World Languages in the 21st Century Conference, and it kind of was a kickoff for a number of different activities and events that took place. And it was also one of the reasons why, as Andrea mentioned, we've decided to kind of rename the, the department as World Languages versus Foreign Language. So, the state has started that process and is using World Language typically as the main nomenclature, although like our state does, there are always other names associated with our subjects. So, LOT will probably also still, which stands for Languages Other Than English, be an acronym used by the state, but World Languages has now become our name moving forward. And so, really, we looked at the recommendations from 2013-14, and we spent a long amount of time really starting to study what came out of that World Languages conference and the many kinds of changes and new state initiatives that are coming forward. We did also do a little bit of data analysis and then prepared this presentation for you. So, these were our 13-14 recommendations, and we found that there were definitely things we felt we could check off and say we did those and we felt good about them, and then some areas where we wanted to spend more time. So, our checks meant we felt good about that, or, or there was action that took place, and then some other areas for us to discuss. So, we started that process, so I'm gonna go back just a little bit, by doing a department survey, and of our 19 members of the department, 10 responses were received, and they were equal, equally between the middle school and the high school. And because we had so many of those same folks on our committee, we really looked at that survey as a jumping-off point and discussed the survey, but also had just full discussion around areas of, of need and areas that we wanted to look at. And we actually worked on some of those things over the course of the year. So, communication continues to be an area that we want to always look to fine-tune and develop to make sure that people are aware of the importance of World Language learning and the fact that it is something that is extremely beneficial for students moving into with 21st century skills. And in some of those places, we find our communication could be better, both in our, our course selection information, so we looked at that in the website and made some updates to our website information, and also with our counselors, as far as making sure they're aware of the most current recommendations that the department would give as far as course placement for students over time, and in alignment with the new states, state initiatives, because there was a LOT frequently asked questions document that came out that talked about students' course of study and how, how it worked and what exams students needed to take over the course of their, their experiences for graduation requirements. We also, again, are very proud of our exchanges. So, we've had some discussion around an exchange for, for our Spanish program at the high school. We don't currently have a, an exchange, but we are doing a trip next year to Spain to explore art and architecture, and included in there is a visit to a school. And we are hoping to make connections with that school and look at the possibility of a, of an exchange in the future. And then our internship program, our interns are very important to us, and so we really reallocated funds as, as the department decided to reallocate some of the building-based funds to support a fourth intern. So, next year, we will have four interns, and we're almost there with having host families for all of those interns. And then we continue to talk about the needs of our students, students with disabilities and students needing support in the area of World Language. One of the things that's really tricky about language is that, you know, they're learning a new language, which, over the course of the number of years they have, sometimes I think our expectations, we, we have to really consider what are the expectations of how well a student can speak, read, write in that new language. And it's really challenging for some of our students who may also have, have learning needs in the area of English language arts. So, that's an area we continue to look at and try to address. We do think the new state initiatives are going to help and support that because the way in which we're talking about how curriculum and instruction is, is provided to students, we think that will support students better. And we also had some conversation about other possibilities like connecting to the local colleges more and supporting students in that way. So, again, the World Language piece was new learning for us, and there's a lot happening at the state level, and I'm gonna turn it over to Linda to talk about that piece.
Before I do that, I do want to mention, we are looking for a host family for Mohammed. He is our intern for next year for French. He is from Senegal. We have not had a Senegalese intern since my first year here more than 20 years ago. So, we're very excited. If you're interested in hosting, please contact me, Linda Palmer. So, for the last several years, the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages has been working hard to help us better prepare our students for 21st century. This video briefly explains some of the work that has been done to develop useful standards at the national level.
Learning languages prepares us to connect in the multilingual and multicultural world we share. ACTUAL and 16 other language organizations collaborated to create the world readiness standards for learning languages. Recently, the standards were modified to focus on literacy, real-world applications of language, and 21st century skills. These standards serve as a roadmap to guide learners to communicate effectively and interact with global competence while participating in communities locally and globally. Supporting this vision are five-goal areas, also known as the five Cs: communication, cultures, connections, comparisons, and communities. Integrating these goal areas into instructional programs helps students become world-ready educated citizens. Within the five Cs are the 11 content standards that describe the knowledge and abilities students should acquire throughout their language education. Let's take a look at the goal areas and the content standards. The communication goal is divided into three content standards describing the three modes or purposes of communication. The interpersonal mode for interacting with others and negotiating meaning. The interpretive mode for understanding and analyzing what is heard, read, or viewed. And the presentational mode for creating messages to inform, explain, persuade, or narrate. Each mode addresses how learners speak, write, listen, view, and use media, anytime, anywhere, with anyone. How can we measure student growth towards this goal? The world readiness standards include sample performance indicators that allow students and teachers to reflect on and track progress in all three modes of communication using can-do statements. These statements describe real-life applications of language, showing what learners can do at each stage from novice to intermediate to advanced.
So you can see that the national conversation includes more than just the communication and cultures aspects on which the New York State standards are built. It includes communities, comparisons, and connections. The single biggest change coming for world language teachers will be the shift away from the four language skills of reading, writing, listening, and speaking toward the three modes of communication that were referenced in the video. And again, those modes are interpersonal, which is spontaneous interactions between two or more people; interpretive, which include the passive language skills of reading and listening; and presentational, which are the rehearsed speaking and the writing skills. The model that has been developed to marry these three modes, sorry, in the classroom is called the Integrated Performance Assessment, which is listed here. The Integrated Performance Assessment is a cluster of three tasks which are aligned to a single theme area. The IPA, as it is called, will soon be the cornerstone of the world language curriculum across New York State. Here, you see an example of an IPA. These are, again, three connected tasks. And the first one, sorry, the whole thing is an example of an IPA at a novice, which is the lowest level, French classroom, and the unit is about school. So first, students have an opportunity to interpret an authentic French resource. Here, they read an ad for school supplies. Next, they have to interact somehow with the text. And here, they'll demonstrate what they understand by categorizing those supplies on the ad into necessary items, unnecessary items, and magnifique items, which would be not necessary but really helpful to have, like a trapper keeper, if you will. Do you remember that? We'll throw that. You're welcome, Lauren. That was for you. So then, they're going to move on to the interpersonal task in which they would have a conversation, again, a spontaneous conversation, with a classmate. And in this case, they would be talking about how they would spend 20 euros if they had them on these school supplies, explaining what they would buy and why they would buy it. Then finally, the presentational mode here would be a written project where they would have to create an ad for school supplies in French, but they would be sold at the school store. You'll note that in each of these IPA tasks, the focus is on what students can do rather than what they can't do or what they don't know how to do. In this way, the IPAs and the curriculum that they support make language accessible for all students. There will be a significant shift away from vocabulary lists and grammar learning toward communication. Of course, our desire to find real-world French, Spanish, and German language samples will create opportunities for students and teachers to utilize the technology that is available already in the district. And this will also provide an increased student engagement through project-based learning. As New York State prepares to rewrite the standards that have not been updated since the 90s, the Brighton High School World, Brighton School, sorry, World Language Department is in an excellent place. Under the leadership of our previous coordinator, Dory Nestrata, we invested a lot of time in the ACTUAL World Language Readiness Standards. We also standardized rubrics for the presentational mode of communication, which again was the writing mode and the presentational speaking. And then in those rubrics, we built in opportunities for students to self-assess. As we move forward, we're going to build on the state's work to develop a clear Brighton World Language Plan and updated curricula in all languages. We will invest significant time in developing integrated performance tasks and assessments and create an additional rubric for interpersonal speaking. Finally, we will utilize an organizational system for our IPAs and common assessments that ensures that all teachers, especially those new to Brighton, can readily access all curricular materials. So now my colleague, Robyn, will talk a little bit about an exciting initiative in the state.
Yes, and I get to talk about data, too. Don't be jealous. Okay. Well, first off, one of the most exciting pieces that's come out of this is the SEAL of Bili literacy. And one of the things that we feel like we can market as a program piece, I think the Advanced Placement or the AP used to be the be-all, end-all. This is really more of a SEAL of Bili literacy between ELA and that can be native language, so it also includes those ENL students and also foreign language or our world language learners. And what's really exciting is it's almost like a menu of items. It's like a menu of options. It incorporates those 21st century skills. One of the pieces we looked at early on was the information provided by employers. They were looking for marketable skills, things they look for in employees. A lot of times, we are asked that as foreign language teachers, like what we do in our classrooms. And one of the things they talked, they talked a lot about were those four, were those 21st century skills. It's, this is tough to read, but it does, what it does, it looks like it just kind of outlines the menu and how you need to have English, through English Language Arts and World Languages, you need to have three points from each of those columns. And it's very differentiated in nature. It's not just the AP. The AP, having a successful passing rate on the Advanced Placement exam will give you one point. But the last piece there, oh, I want to go to the last piece and it's hard to see. You can get two points from a presentation. And I think that really incorporates a lot of those 21st century skills and we're working on setting aside, as a group, next year, laying out the groundwork and then the following year, really, really get moving on this program for that SEAL of Bili literacy. It's something that I know when they first did, the first year they did this in 2013-2014, there were about 300 students. Last year, there were over 1,700. So it is, it is getting traction and it's a program that I think people are really excited about. Also, too, it's moving children beyond just getting their standard. Because there's a, there's a, there's a common path and this is a little more uncommon and it's pushing those kids into the higher level study, not just getting what they need to graduate. This is going another level. This next one is the, this is the data for enrollment. If you look at the number of sixth graders versus the percentage of students beyond year one. One of the things, we looked at a lot of these different numbers and things that have changed from year to year, students moving in and out. But also, too, when we get to that number, there was the percentage of students who took checkpoint A through AP, which is beyond that checkpoint C, and those numbers. And actually, that Spanish number isn't completely correct.
22% of students take through level five or AP. It's only 9% that take it, just at AP.
Right. So there, so that number is a little, a little off. But I wanted to make sure I, that Linda could clarify that for us. So when we get to these numbers, it's interesting to see the numbers of checkpoint A and then where they go and how the numbers dwindle. What we'd like to do is get that, those numbers to stay and that would be hopefully with marketing that and selling that SEAL of Bili literacy. When you look at the left chart there, don't be fooled by the Spanish numbers. That's not at 50%. The bottom number is 90%. So we are at 100% passing for the last three years for checkpoint A. For French, German, and Spanish, that's at 94%. It's not 50. I think from a distance, it would look like 50%. It's not. The numbers do, we did look at a lot of the pieces of those, like the success pieces with speaking, listening, reading, and writing, which now are renamed the IPAs as we move into the Integrated Performance Assessment. And then the next one is, on the right side is the scoring of 85% or higher, the mastery. If you look, those numbers are still pretty high. Those pieces, we would just look at separately within the year and pick apart where they, where the students fell with those skill sets. And here's checkpoint B. Obviously, if you see the passing rate 65 or higher, those numbers are pretty high. They dwindle a little bit, again, with the 85 plus. But the students are all very successful with those, with those numbers from 2016 to 2018. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Treasure.
So as we said earlier, the state level, there's a lot of action going on. At BOCES, we've developed a World Language Leadership Forum that has met a few times this year and will continue to meet next year. They did assessment writing and we had several teachers participate in the assessment writing for the checkpoint A and B exams. But most recently, the state has put out a request to revise the world language standards and they're going to start that process this May and hope to have new standards within a six-to-eight, six-to-nine month window. So some of our work, again, was around really just studying that as much as we could and kind of thinking about where we have already done some of that work and where we need to go. It was a very busy year filled with new learning, reflection, collaboration, and planning. And we're very excited about the direction that New York State is headed in. We also, I think as a group, continue to develop rapport and relationships and communication between and amongst the buildings and plan to do more work in that area. And short-term goals will be to start that IPA process and start really exploring what does it look like, what does it mean, using the can-do statements even further than we already have. And we'll start that with a summer day focused on the world language, 21st Century Conference and the information that was shared there. And also then next year, our biggest recommendation would be for the SEAL of Bili literacy. So next year would be a planning year and we have a group of world language teachers and administrators. We will be seeking also support from counseling and the English department because it is a collaborative effort to start the process of planning, to have a SEAL of Bili literacy as a recognition for our students in the 2021 school year. And that concludes our, our work.
Well, fantastic. Andrea, do you have anything else further to ask or add or speak in other tongues?
Ask me friends.
Ask me questions. It's up to you, but.
I know, it was a great group. And I was sat on many foreign language, or many program reviews. This is the second foreign language program review I've sat on. And what's interesting is, is that we really worked on some different things and going through what's going on at the state level. So I thought that was really helpful for this group. And it's just from TCMS and the high school.
Right.
So it was a smaller group and to really work through those things together. So it, it went really, really well. I was really pleased with the numbers that came to each of our meetings, too.
It does seem, too, that the work just happened to fit well with, with the state, where the state work is and where emphasis on rigor for all with our, all of our group is, too. You know, having the Bili literacy seal, having students and parents look at that in that accomplishment and achievement, you know, way is probably, the timing is all in a good spot on that, so.
And there's one school right now doing, in the area of that.
Or we had a, we had a teacher coming, Eastridge is doing it.
Yeah, there were a couple of schools in the area that have started this process and across the state. So in the first, the SEAL of Bili literacy actually came out in 2016. It was actually approved by New York State. And so there were about 200 students. I think they piloted with a small group of districts. That first year, it increased to 1,700 across the state last school year. So it's been definitely picking up steam across the area. But Eastridge and Spencerport both have the SEAL of Bili literacy. They're both very open and welcoming and supportive. They sent us resources and materials. We reached out and had conversation around how they are working their process. And there is flexibility, though, to kind of make it our own within those criteria. So that's what we'll spend next year doing.
Is it a, I just had a question. Is it, are they individual achievement seals? Or would it be like a community, like an ELA and a language community?
It's considered one seal and a recognition for the, at graduation. Yeah, but it incorporates their English experience and their world language experience. And actually, we didn't, I don't think we said this. English as a new language, students can also show proficiency in their native language in conjunction with the ELA and also then receive the seal. Chris, Jen Wheeler is very interested in being a part of this and actually had, had a lot of information also because she was aware of the seal as something that our ENL students could potentially also participate in.
I'd also like to say, both your presentation and the one prior to yours really shows how these curriculum reviews are now so embedded in our practice. I remember in the early years when we started doing them, we really struggled. Now, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? But now, you're going so much further beyond that because that basis has already been established and you have a foundation to go back and look at and see what was done several years ago. So it really is very embedded in the work that we do and I think it really shows in all of our programs. So thank you for the work that you did and to the media folks also. It was great.
Can I just make a quick thank you also? I just wanted to say thank you for your support. Without your support, we couldn't have our trips, which we have, you've heard all about them, right? We've got three at the middle school, we've got three at the high school. We wouldn't have the interns, which is a program that makes a huge difference. We're the only ones that I know of in our state that has an intern program. And we also want to thank you for Christine and before Christine Allison, for people who will help to connect our six, 12 departments. We're really, really grateful for the role that you've given to someone in the district to help us work well together and build our program even stronger. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
I say thanks again as a dad. And too, Linda, Pedro enjoyed you a great deal, of course, and had such a wonderful experience with my kids. I had a great experience also. Rob and I was just in your class the other day. I don't know at all what anybody was saying, but they were very engaged and it was exciting to be in. They really, you can't tell. It's interesting when you don't speak the language. I did, like, very carefully. Nobody said it or anything that sounded derogatory in any way, but.
It's foreign language. We just go right to the native language. We go right to the target language.
Kids are really inspired by your work, too. So thank you.
I'll throw in, I'll throw in a thanks to Mary Ann Walter back there because I've gotten really good at reading context clues. When my children and my husband are speaking German to one another, I can participate right along with the conversation because I go, "Wait, you're pointing at the clock. I know what you, I know what you're talking about." So thank you. All the German dinner table conversations.
Well, you know, I also say thank you for highlighting, you know, as you laid it out. But it also does highlight, you know, tonight happened to be the public hearing on our budget. But in building a budget and when we discuss what makes a bright education a bright education and what do people value and why do people move here specifically so their children can attend Brighton schools? This exactly is part of that purpose and part of that reason. And having the ability to work with interns from all over the world who come and live with us for a year at a time, having the opportunity to take those trips. A huge percentage of our students participate in one or more trips by the time that they graduate and leave here as a senior. So it does highlight all of those aspects of things that go beyond basic and simple mandates that are always difficult to make sure we have the resources to fund. So thank you very much and that just happened to be a timely reminder into that window. So thank you so much. And thank you for all the folks who participated, again, on that committee. That was a large committee also. These all are and it gives a great opportunity for community members, along with staff and board members, to participate. It's one of the fun things that we do and really it's professional development for us also. So we enjoy that. So we also, our final official report this evening, not to be diminished at all, Mr. Alamo, a Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan update, sir.
I absolutely will not try to compete with those two, two presentations, so I will be, be brief.
In what language?
Okay, just a very brief update. A lot of exciting works going on, but just an interest of time. Certainly, our construction manager's report is posted on a monthly basis. This is just to give you a brief update as to the status of the, of the project. Starting out first at Council Rock, and the way this presentation is structured is major activities that have been completed or ongoing and what we can expect in the next couple of months, along with some kind of exciting pictures. So at Council Rock, a lot of the site work is complete at this point. We have built the foundation pad and we're starting to build the foundation wall, all the underground mechanical systems, the sewer lines, storm, stormwater lines in the south end of the building is complete. Again, we thank our neighbors for their, for their patience and understanding. That was some, some noisy work, but really important infrastructure that's been, that's been put into place. And then the phasing development continues. So now we're starting to think about the summer months and we're starting to think about the 1920 school year and the work in the north end of the building, expansion of the cafeteria and renovation of the kitchen area. So Principal Tapin and John Novelli and the entire building team are talking about those phasing plans and how to allow the construction to happen with at least, as, with as least disruption as possible to our academic program. So thank you for their efforts. So thank you for their efforts. It's, it really is a, a second full-time job for, for Mr. Tappin to, to think about all the, the program implications and how we could best mitigate those. So kudos to him. Upcoming activities that I talked about, we actually are going to start putting some steel. Steel erection will be beginning in the, in the west portion of the south addition, backfilling of the foundation, firewall along the existing building. The summer schedule work will include the build-out of the temporary swing space. So again, those are all those program accommodations that Mr. Tappin and Mr. Novelli have been working on, on how to maintain programs as best we can during the, the construction phase. The addition instruction continues and that will continue over the course of the 1920 school year. Due to the site plan, we will have some programs in trailers for 1920. So we're thinking about the site, we're thinking about traffic flow with our buses, drop-off and pickup, parent traffic. There was a meeting today to talk about that and how they're going to plan for, for those areas. And again, just all the infrastructure work that's going to happen in the, the front end of the building starting this summer. Just some pictures here about showing the, the foundation and the work that's been done. You can see all the, the heavy machinery and the equipment working really close to the building. So again, we just thank the, the whole Council Rock School community for their, for their patience and everyone's just been troopers. It's, they've made the best of what could have been a really disruptive situation. So the entire school community, we thank you for your, for your patience. Some, some more of the, the foundation work that's happening, there's happened, and the end product, which will be our courtyard. And there's the wall starting to go up. So we're, we're starting to build a very welcome foundation wall that'll be going up for the next several months and continue into the next school year. Again, more of the infrastructure and what's happening. So then moving on to the high school and the middle school, the work that's been completed. We've had regular construction meetings now. They're having meetings with the, with the school administrators on a weekly basis now, planning for the work. So we have our contractors, almost all the trades are onsite at this point, mobilizing. The high school auditorium has been demolished and the scaffolding has been, been erected. The middle school, over the break week, we were able to take out some of the ceiling and try to get a jumpstart on the kitchen work and the, the seating renovations and the backend kitchen. Our goal is not to have two kitchens offline when we start school in September of, of 2019. So we appreciate Mr. Thomas's help in allowing us to get in there and get some of the, the work done in the, the middle school kitchen. The high school transformer, that's been a really painful process. What we have to do with the, all the work that's happening at the high school, we need a complete new transformer, which is currently in a vault underneath the building. So that's going to be used for infrastructure, but we're going to have to have a new, a new transformer that we will be building on the front side, on the Witten roadside. And we're designing some architecture to make it look aesthetically pleasing. So we'll have, move our, our signs to the front so people will be able to see, not in a distracted manner, but make it look really nice. We are completely at the mercy of, of our G and E. So we're waiting on their engineering plans before we can communicate to the school community when the complete power shutdown will be as we install that new transformer. So more to come, more to come on that. Upcoming activities then for Phase Two, and this is the, again, the middle school and high school side. We will begin asbestos in the high school crawl space. That is a segregated, segregated area of the building, so that will be happening in containment. And then asbestos abatement in the auditorium and the toilet rooms will be happening during the B-shift hours. Again, all safety precautions will be closely monitored at all times with, with that type of work. The summer schedule, we'll be building out the high school auditorium, working on schedule with that. We did identify more asbestos in the walls and in the ceiling, so that schedule for the auditorium has been extended, almost an additional 10 weeks and added some substantial cost to the project that, that we were not planning for. Our initial, initial records were proven to be inaccurate in, in certain areas. So we're taking the opportunity to completely create an asbestos-free environment in the, in the auditorium. So the other work, build out at the cafeteria, TCMS cafeteria and kitchen, will be prioritizing some ADA work there in the, in the cafeteria area, in individualizing or individual room renovations at each building, the art rooms at the high school this summer, all part of, all part of the scope of work that will be completed. So here's some pictures of the auditorium that'll either make you really happy or sad, but first step was demolition of our auditorium. So equipment went in there and just bulldozed it. It's, it was pretty, pretty amazing. There was a lot of people asking for hard hits to be able to poke their heads in and to see. So this is the scaffolding that was put up. So when they start removing the, the walls and the ceiling and abating that area, all the scaffolding will be used, it'll be shared by the contractors. And then there's also mechanical work that's going to be happening in the auditorium.
Think it's really build some tremendous sets in that space. We let, let our theater folks go.
Christopher Snyder was, I'm sure he was looking on it all. Just again, some more of the, what the auditorium looks like, pretty, pretty, pretty amazing. And then our bathroom, our toilet room. So thank you to Dr. Hall for, for accommodating, allowing us to get started on some of the work, making some concessions now to prevent some disruption into the, in the fall. So we've been able to take a couple of bathrooms offline and start the demolition work on that, which will, all new bathroom renovations, privacy accommodations, ADA accommodations, and then just refreshing and, and upgrading, modernizing our toilet room facilities. Great picture that I hope speaks for itself. And just can kind of see the, just the dated nature of our, of our bathrooms that will, will be improving. So the ceiling, so this is our modern look at our middle school hallways. Mr. Thomas has reported that it's helped acoustics and helped eavesdropping on what students are, are saying during, during the course of the school day. But again, us being able to get in there and do some of this work is going to provide tremendous help on the schedule come, come fall time. Again, more modern, modern look for our back corridor. And so here's our, our budget. I'm trying to think how I can increase this. So right here we have our budget summary. Trying to think the best way to, Ian, you showed me how to do this last time. Do you remember? If you don't mind.
Zoom in, you should just be able to click.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have our, our contract allowance. Oh, okay. So remember, because of the bids and where they were coming in, we were, did have not awarded any of the scope at French Road at this point in time. So these, this construction dollars right here is just for the, the three buildings. So that's part of what we're asking voters to consider is an additional drawdown from our capital reserve to, to fully fund the full scope that was presented to the community. So we have our costs at this point. We have our change orders to date. A lot of that was site work for the field and Council Rock is incurring change orders. So you can see at the bottom here, and I know this is terrible for the screen, but everyone has it in front of them. So where our benchmark is, is the remaining project contingency. So of all the issues that we have identified, the most costly of which has been the asbestos abatement at the auditorium, we still have $1.6 million of contingent, construction contingency remaining. So again, it's important to be able to honor the scope that we presented to the community and in honoring that, the tax impact and the financing plan. So that's the key benchmark that we'll look at on a monthly basis to see, to see where we are. And with that, any questions?
Anything further to add, Larry? As a board representative to the group?
Yeah, I would say a couple of things. This is a five, six-year lift when you take into account planning and punch lists at the end. And, you know, they always say expect the unexpected, which is that 10 or 15% over what you've budgeted because things happen. You open up four walls, three of them you find what you wanted, and the fourth one, the auditorium, there's asbestos that we didn't anticipate.
Especially in older buildings, very typical.
Had a couple of issues that Lou and the team worked through over Council Rock where they had to send the contractors back in to redo some drainage that wasn't done correctly. This is an extraordinarily heavy lift. The, Lou's talked about this a lot in our meetings, but the ground crews that we have are amazing. They are with these guys every day, they're seeing things. John Novelli, who we called out, Kevin Geis, a whole bunch of guys that are just there working us through. We've gotten together, a lot of pop-up meetings, a few different times to talk to, we just found this, we've got to have a discussion. Give Lou great credit because he's focused on spending what we said we would spend, understanding, and you just said it, I think half under your breath mark, 1.6 left for contingency for where we are now is not a lot. We'll continue to watch that daily and we, they've got a long way to go on this. All the principals and the teachers have been great. You know, Matt talked last time about being able to use it as a lesson, everything from physics on a machine and things like that. This is just really messy work. We'll go like gangbusters July, August to get as much done as possible, but we're working. They've got crews working alongside the kids. This is just a really heavy lift and will look great on the other side, but it's just going to be bumpy.
It really, you know, and it's, thanks to you and the, the committee for the updates frequently, and I know everyone is paying attention, not only to the work but to the dollars, which we all appreciate. And it is amazing when you are in and around the buildings, how much is going on right now and how, how things progress, you know? And the one thing I would add to, to our members of the public, you know, we, these are old buildings. It's not at all unusual when you start working in 50 and 60 and 80-year-old buildings, asbestos especially. Things, not only is asbestos, what was known about it at the time as a material, documentation, drawings were never done completely accurately. So you are, you do run that risk and the, but the point is, anything that we find, we're taking care of it, which is really the right thing. We'll figure out a way, we'll move from the contingents, you know, the, we'll, we'll look at the contingency, but we'll move from capital reserve. But it makes no sense to not do a project the right way and the safe way. So, you know, that's, we've talked about that previously, so.
And as we are going through it, there is a really significant effort to upgrade all our records so that any work done in the future, so that's a piece of this whole thing that's, that's being led as well, so.
Every time you open a wall and a ceiling.
You did.
Who put that pipe there?
Exactly, right. And there are things that have been in place, like you said, for 60 years and we're fine. Once you disturb them, you have no choice. The transformer's significant, and that was something we're doing because our G and E said it had to be done, and that's extra work and we've got to deal with it, and we'll be better on the other side, but it was never contemplated in the beginning.
Never really planned, and like you described, you've explained to us at Audit Committee and otherwise, that, that that work is very prescribed by our G and E in terms of everything, location, size, everything is very specific to them. They have engineering and design people we have to work with, so that is what it is. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, as Larry said, to all of our people, our facilities people, our building principals, assistant principals, who are working with us every single day to make it the best it possibly can be for, for everybody. So thanks. And certainly our staff for patience and bearing with it and working through it, so. All right, then we have a couple of other reports this evening. We have the financial report section. You'll see that we have previously been given and is posted, the executive summary of the budget status report to Kevin from Lou dated May 14th. We also have our treasurer's report prepared by Lou and our, and our district treasurer, Dahlia Watts, our director of finance, for the period ending March 31st. And we also, in this section, have the report covering student activity accounts from January 1st through March 31st. Does anyone have any questions on any of those or anything further we need? Pretty self-explanatory. And then we have motion, please, to accept those reports.
So.
Oof, by Larry, seconded by Marv. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our Monroe County School Boards Association committees have all wound up and are finished, except legislative committee did meet May 1st. We had our final meeting of the year. Karen, would you like to?
We did have our final meeting of the year. There isn't a lot of activity right now in Albany around education. Sherry Johnson, the executive director of Monroe County School Boards, described it as eerie. She said she's taken to combing through people's Twitter accounts to see what they have to say about education. So there we have it. That's how we wrapped up our year. We did meet with Jamie Romeo, though, as a function of Monroe County School Boards Association this past Thursday. Mark, Dr. McGowan, and I were there, as well as representatives from the Aranda Creek School Districts, Grease and Pittsburgh, to talk about what our legislative priorities continue to be. And all four districts present, you know, have, have the same request that we run the formula, right?
Yeah, we did have, as you said, we typically do in the spring, meet with the local representatives with our groups on those issues that may or may not pop up in the final session as they wrap up through June. We have also taken the opportunity to continue to converse with Jamie on our funding situation and any possibilities for some additional one-shot aid, which at this point I would say is doubtful, but, you know, you never know. We have a meeting scheduled coming up with Joe Robach so that we continue to make all those connections. And then specific to our own issue, we'll plan, once everything is finished up here in the next month or so, we'll discuss planning about communicating with them and with Albany and further on the entirety of the funding formulas and, and our situation, so, so legislative committee.
I do want to say that the liberal relations of the last meeting on the 24th had a presentation by Western Rennegon about pathways to teaching, calling home teachers.
Oh, okay.
And it focused on a lot of diversity, and I have a lot of information here if anybody is interested. It was pretty interesting.
Okay, great. Yeah, I forgot that you had, that meeting was late in April and that you didn't get a chance to report out. Thanks, Marv, for reminding us on that. And I would like to take a look through that if I could. BOSI's report, Marv, do you have anything?
My goodness, my wife gave me a bunch of stuff. Sorry about that, but.
No, that's good.
Dan White spoke on a panel about equity and opportunity for students, which was held at Columbia University. The Audit Committee report, internal audit, had a clean risk assessment. They have selected campus construction, which we use, to do their $22 million capital project. 64 students attended the Skills USA, five Brighton students, and Avery Cheadle, I believe is the pronunciation, took first place in the CNC milling, so we have something to be proud of there.
Fantastic.
On May 10th, they're going to meet state, well, May 10th will be, May 10th, yes?
May 10th was.
Yes, was. A statewide initiative. We held a professional development session on development, inclusion, and diversity with Dr. Archie from Brockport State that many of us have heard.
Right.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Other board member reports. So this is just a quick summary of individual board member activities that you'd like to bring up since we last discussed in mid-April. We'll start down, Christina, is there anything you'd like to bring up tonight?
Well, we went to the superintendent's diversity and inclusion conference day on Friday, several of us and the administrators. And the superintendents of Rush Henrietta, East High, Brockport, Grease, all presented. And that was a, I think the most constructive time for me was actually when we worked together as a team to talk about ways in which we could utilize the information that we were given and bring it back to our district.
Yeah, I think you're right. We had a nice opportunity that there was a team of, were 10 or 11 of us from the district? Christine and I participated. And it was a great day, a full day at BOSI's One hosted. It's an initiative from the Superintendent's Association at the state level and one of the programs that they're running, along with a women's initiative, which is interesting that they're running also. So we had a great, I, I thought there was some really good material that day, but you're right, the core middle of the day was sort of team planning time, so it gave us the opportunity as a group to discuss where, where we are, where we've come from, what we, what we're planning for summer and under Kevin's leadership. And we had, each building was represented, so it was, it was a really positive day, I thought, for us as a group. And I have to say, without, you know, tuning our own horn, I mean, we're not perfect here, but certainly in terms of the report-outs from the other districts that were there, we, we've invested in a lot of work already that others are sort of just trying to figure out how to begin with. So it's, it was nice to see that part, and, but we are still able to learn from others also, so thank you. Adrienne, do you have anything?
The diversity equity full committee meeting is on Thursday. We, all three of the subcommittees will be there. And next week, our, we wrap up our wellness committee meeting, I think, on the 22nd.
Great. Thank you. Larry?
Hit the construction stuff, and we've got our last Audit Committee meeting, you, me and Karen, I think, in a couple of weeks.
Right, we will add our June 14th meeting, is that, what's the date of that? Whatever that June meeting is that we have, we will have, we have Audit Committee scheduled prior to that meeting, yes, and we'll have quite a bit of construction related and some audit work and some end-of-the-year stuff, so yes.
That's the 11th.
11th, June 11th, that's. You should know all these things up top, my memory.
Did I say that?
Thank you. Karen?
I will also be present at the diversity equity meeting on Thursday presenting my. I will also be present at the diversity equity meeting on Thursday, presenting with the family engagement group. I met with the subcommittee from Curriculum Council, the grading of non-academic behaviors a few weeks ago, finalizing the work that we'll present to our larger group in a few weeks. It's been a really fascinating opportunity for me to, to think about how, just, just how we, as, as teachers and adults, how we think kids demonstrate learning. And then I was able to attend a climate rally held by the Climate Club and the Lorax Club a couple of weeks ago, and I've talked a lot about these kids this year. I received an invitation last night from one of their leaders to attend the Monroe County Legislature, Legislature tonight, to urge them to also adopt a climate action plan. And I, I just really can't, I really can't say enough about their, their passion and the way they've educated themselves and then are educating the adults around them.
The entire community, you're right.
It's really tremendous to see. So I did promise them that I would write to my legislators to urge them to develop a climate action plan like we are working on doing, and I hope you all do the same.
Great, fantastic, thank you, Karen. Marv, anything new?
Well, Karen just mentioned Curriculum Council. I'm serving on the same subcommittee, and we're, I'm meeting in a few weeks. Library evaluation has ended. Upstate Institute, which was formerly Genesee Valley School Board Institute, met today, and that's a, a group that supports all of the staff, the cleaning staff, the pool operators, bus drivers, and clerical support, very, very, it's a very good organization. And they had a meeting today. We meet about three times a year.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you for that update. Jaleen?
Well, on Thursday, we're all looking forward to having lunch with our bus drivers to honor them and thank them for all of their hard work and taking such good care of our children and keeping them safe every day. And I'm sure that construction at Council Rock is maybe providing a little bit more of a challenge for them. So again, we thank everybody for their patience. And on Monday, we have our final budget open house at 10 o'clock in the morning. We've all been taking turns attending. I think there have been eight sessions so far, am I correct? And anybody else who still has budget questions, 10 o'clock Monday morning, we'll be right here in this room for an hour. Stop in for a few minutes if you have any questions that you would like answered before the vote on Tuesday.
Or send an email to Dr. McGowan, he will meet anybody, anywhere, to discuss the budget.
For anything, at any time.
Anytime. Yeah, I thought with the slogan, anywhere, anytime. Well, you better be careful on that, but yes. No, thank you. Yeah, a couple of things that we've already talked about that I was fortunate to be involved in. Couple other quick things, the Act for Education Subcommittee that you all are familiar with, which is a subcommittee of the superintendents group, we've been working on advocacy for public education in greater Monroe County, as you know, for almost five years now. And we had a partnership that kicked off last Monday, the 6th, and it was Small Business Week nationally, and it was a partnership with the county. We had a really nice kickoff breakfast out at BOSI's Two in Spencerport, and it went really, really well. And it highlighted partnerships with businesses from anything from the two zombie homes that BOSI's are building with the county on either side of the county, using students, commercial labor, and the county together, along with businesses and small businesses that we have internship opportunities with, job shadowing, partnerships with schools. So it was a great kickoff. The highlight was at the, toward the late stages of the presentation, we were able to present all the different ways all the school districts participate with and among businesses. And I think the business leaders who were there were really surprised at the depth and breadth of that, so that went really, really well. And on a fun note, we had a ball Saturday, May 4th, Brighton Little League Opening Day, which is always one of the highlights in community. Kevin and I marched, and there was a bunch of folks there, and ended up in the TCMS gym, and Bill gave a quick, Bill Mailey gave a quick speech, and the kids couldn't wait to get out of there and go play, so. They're started and off and running, as I'm sure everybody knows. All they needed is some dry weather.
Yeah.
But anyway, so that was fun.
Great.
We got that. So, all right, remaining, our Brighton Teachers Association report. Judy, welcome tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to thank, and you've already commented on this evening, but all the teachers who presented this evening and, and last meeting, and actually throughout the, any presentation, our teachers came forward with, to the board, they take great pride in the programming that they offer our, our children in the district, and, and at the same time can reflect quite deeply on their craft in, in order to grow and develop and, and actually set very high expectations for themselves on behalf of our students. But we also thank you so much for, for your support and the support of the community. Without the community, we would not have these types of programming, make no mistake. So thank you to everyone. A few things that's been happening with our Brighton teachers, so the Brighton Teachers Association, George Smith is the advisor of the Lorax Club. He shared that there were a couple of tree planting events scheduled around town as part of the Climate Club with Craig Smith and Earth Week festivities. It included planting trees around the district with high school and middle school students on April 25th. This was a collaborative event with some TCMS clubs, including the Green Thumb, the Environmental Impact Club, Black Student Union also participated. And you can go around and count if you'd like, there's a little over 100 baby trees and shrubs planted all about, purchased by the Lorax Club through the Monroe County Soil and Water Conservation District Tree and Shrub Program. Some of our members in our community, some families may have participated on Saturday, April 27th. There was an open-to-the-community tree planting event at Buckland Park coordinated with the town of Brighton. And again, our Brighton teachers were very much involved from TCMS, FRES, the high school, and also Council Rock. Students planted about 150 white pine, white spruce trees in the undeveloped southeast portion of Buckland Park. Families were encouraged to be a part of that as well. And then another tree planting project involved the FRES Tree Huggers Club and the Color, Color Brighton Green Organization also planted, I think, just in the last few days. I don't know if they got rained out, but the jazz ensemble was expected to play at the Lila Festival. Got rained out. Very sorry to hear that. Mother Nature. Helping Hands Club has been very active. They assisted in the ice cream socials at both Council Rock and French Road, as well as cooking dinner at the Ronald McDonald House on April 12th. And that was the Friday night the break began. Laura Bogart is the advisor for that Helping Hands Club. Courtney Stern and Andrea Doyle were working with some folks at MCC this fall, where they were supporting some of our students who needed to successfully take a math placement assessment. So Andrea and Courtney offered review classes, developed a program, a review program, offered classes during flex time once a cycle, got the kids set up for a free online review, began working with them through the problems to help them to be successful. And in fact, six students achieved the score necessary to enter MCC in that credit-bearing class for math. At Council Rock, PE teachers, Kristen Cooper, one of the PE teachers there, shared that Council Rock's been taking responsible risks, creating, imagining, and innovating during their physical fitness activities. Some cardio drumming, it's a great source of physical activity, and it's an effective aerobic workout because it increases the heart rate and blood flow. Fun. And that they were also able to complete some rhythmic movement and drumming patterns to a variety of songs such as Chicken Dance or Uptown Funk, YMCA, you know some of those. It was great seeing the students also working on habits like persisting, striving for accuracy, finding humor while drumming to the music. Council Rock students also learned about bike and pedestrian safety in physical education classes during the week of April 26th, and that was in preparation of the very recent Bike and Walk to School Week that we just had last week. Families were encouraged to walk or ride any day during the week to promote healthy lifestyle choices. And the official national Bike and Walk to School Day was Wednesday, May 8th. And then finally, and Principal Tappin already announced this, but I'll announce it again, Council Rock's very excited to announce that the school will be honored by the Institute of Habits of Mind with the recognition of being named an internationally certified Habits of Mind School of Excellence. It's a rare, rare certification to achieve, and we believe we are the first primary school in the United States to receive this distinction. Rigorous process, but really results for us far more important than a certification is that all members of Council Rock, the children and adults, embracing the 16 Habits of Mind as part of their everyday lives and an integral part of their, our school culture. And we believe these habits will help children reach their potential as learners, problem solvers, and citizens, and a ceremony is being planned in June. Thank you so much.
A young person I know a while said to me this morning, you know, it didn't work out the way I thought, so I had to be a flexible thinker. Think they articulate their thinking so much better than these adults.
You don't need to discuss what that was in response to, but it's a great story.
No, I wouldn't have to, but she was a flexible thinker, so. Could I owe you some flexible thinking? I thought it was just so interesting. And we, you hear that classroom to classroom to classroom, it's a part of how kids are living and learning at Council Rock, and articulating how they think.
Up through now, great.
And it's influencing work we're doing in our committees as well.
It is, yes.
You're right.
Thank you very much, Judy, appreciate it. We appreciate you stepping in this year to help out with the BTU report, so thank you so much. Dr. McGowan, superintendents report, if there's any great stuff still left for you.
No, you've taken it all, but I'm not sure if you've heard, there's a vote on Tuesday, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, the HHS, we had a dinner, and we hope people can come out and participate. So thank you.
You really meant that was all, okay. All right, then, we are, one other item remaining on the agenda this evening, our consent agenda with a few items that we need to take care of. Motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Marv, and seconded by Karen. We do not have any gifts listed this month, so we will go ahead. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Prior to adjourning, I will remind folks, we mentioned the June 11th meeting, that's our final scheduled Board of Education meeting for the school year, so unless we need something to, to deal with something separately. At that June 11th meeting, one of the great things about it is it is a celebration night, it's our tenure reception, that's the night we formally grant tenure to our teachers who are up for tenure, so that's a wonderful night, along with all the other things that we have to gather up in that final meeting of the year, so I remind folks of that. May we please then have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Marv. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, we're adjourned for the evening.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.